Get around home.
Well, we better get this meeting started. It's just a hair after nine o'clock. If you all can take your seats, we'll get rolling here. Stand with me if you would for the flag salute. Rain standing. Pastor Ron Keiker from Countryside Baptist Church will lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you and thank you, Lord, for your grace and mercy upon us this morning. Thank you for the beautiful weather and all that you provide. God, we ask you this morning, we ask you for your blessing, Lord, that you would bring rain upon Reno County. Lord, that as the farmers get their wheat in, Lord, that you provide the rain to fill the aquifers and to water this land. God, we ask you for this meeting this morning, Lord, that you might be gracious and that you might be present. And God, that you would guide all the decisions that are made and all those who speak and all those who lead. God, that your blessing might be upon them, that your wisdom might be upon them. And God, that you might be pleased with what happens here. God, we thank you and we seek your favor and your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
This morning, before we get started, we're going to honor a retiring deputy from the sheriff's department. I'll read a little bit about him here this morning. Deputy Clayton Beard started his career with Reno County on September 11th of 2000 in youth services. On February 3rd, 2003, he started as a deputy with Reno County Sheriff's Office and has held the positions of jail deputy, patrol deputy, jail corporal, and jail sergeant. He finished his career as deputy assigned to the sheriff's tactical action team. Beard is certified peer support specialist and a certified critical incident debriefing. Deputy Beard has dedicated 24 years to Reno County and 21 years to Reno County Sheriff's Department. We thank you for your service. If you'd come forward, sir.
Thank you.
You're okay. Is there anyone here for public comment this morning? Please state your name and where you're from and try to limit yourself to five minutes if you could please.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Carrie Mayhew. I'm with Hutchinson Community Foundation. I live in 67502. I'm excited to tell you about a new initiative that the community foundation has launched in the last week called the Love Where You Live Community Empowerment Initiative. You'll remember that three years ago, when the ARPA funds were awarded to Reno County and our communities, the community foundation and seven of our partner organizations got together and led a resident engagement initiative that asked residents in Reno County, what were their priorities coming out of COVID and to use the ARPA funds for? That led to a resident engagement report that identified childcare, workforce development, and housing as the top three community priorities that again, the commission gratefully awarded significant ARPA funding to that you'll hear from today, what the impact of those funds have had so far. We're going to launch now a three-year initiative asking residents what their priorities are now and going forward. It starts with a survey that is out now and people can find it at renosurvey.com. And that will go through July. We're hoping to hear from at least 1,100 Reno County residents from all across the county and kind of every population and demographic in our community. The results of the survey will inform reports that will be published for seven different communities in Reno County. So we'll have a report for Hutchinson, South Hutchinson, Nickerson, Bueller, Haven, and Yoder area, the Pretty Prairie area, and then generally the Fairfield area, Western Reno County, as well as a report for all of Reno County. Then in the fall, we're going to host a series of resident gatherings where we'll ask people to come together and process what the results of the surveys were and help identify priorities moving forward and collaborate around action projects that can make progress in those priorities. And then phase three is that we'll put some grant funding behind what comes out of those those gatherings and the action projects. And we'll do that every year for three years. What we really want to do is help people feel a sense of ownership, pride, belonging, and agency in this community all across Reno County, that they can have part and make progress on what they care about most in this community. Sometimes it takes money. Sometimes it takes just collaboration. Sometimes it takes just knowing that somebody else in your community or in the county has the same passion as you and you make that connection. So we're really excited to launch this. I do have flyers I'll hand to Patrick and maybe can hand around. We hope that you all will help us spread the word across your constituents across Reno County. Again, we want at least 1,100 people to take the survey. It's going to take getting it into the hands directly of a lot of people. We know that, you know, just, you know, scrolling social media and seeing a link to a survey is probably not going to get those results. So I have flyers that have a QR code to it. We also have paper copies available. And we will be distributing those around the county. So like in city halls, libraries, senior centers, there will be paper copies available for people. And they would just return them back to the community foundation. But we're excited to see what the residents say, what we learn from this process and what kind of action we inspire. So we hope that you will support this process. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move 6F from the consent agenda. And since we're voting on money that the United Way has and put it after their presentation.
Mr. Chair, I request 6G be moved to and recommend that we move 7C and D to the top since there's so many people here for that.
Oh, I apologize. 6G was the one I meant to move, not 6F. 6G, the same as Daniel. I just can't read today, apparently.
And actually, I made a mistake. He's 6G. I wanted 6E, Echo. Please. Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah, I think, I think we need Echo and Golf moved.
You got all that, Sandra?
Yes.
So move. Move.
Mr. Freezen?
I'll second.
A little rusty.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiselman?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Hey, we don't have to say yays or nays. Then you can talk again. That's good. So. Well, we'll move right into the business items. 7A Annual Report. Kyle, if you want to come do that.
Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Did you want to move the other first?
It's your call.
Yeah, we can. That's right. We said we would do that. 7D and A. If you don't mind holding off a little bit. Kyle, let's do those. Move 7D for United Way. That's here. United Way and Interfaith Housing Updates. Let's do SCAD and Interfaith Housing. Yeah, they're first on the list anyway.
Thank you very much. Good morning, commissioners. Clint Nelson, CEO of Interfaith Housing and Community Services. Thank you for having us here today. We're excited to give you an update on the amazing work that we've been performing with the county's investment of ARPA funding. We are how's that? We are about 14 months into the actual performance of this program and had some really tremendous results, have learned a few new tactics and excited to share this. We have a very nice PowerPoint. Thank you to Barracal. They've been a strong partner throughout our ARPA housing program. So I wanted to start. You want me to give you a cue? Slide two. As you're reading these, I want to give a little bit of background, some key dates from our subrecipient contract agreement that we entered into with Reno County. So the county received its prime award, as you know, of a little over 12 million in May of 2021. As Carrie mentioned, the Hutchinson Community Foundation was instrumental in collecting that public input and identifying those priorities and bringing that to the county. We were approached early in 2022 by a previous county commissioner to develop a strategy to utilize these ARPA funds for housing improvements and housing stability. Presented our proposal mid-2022 to the county and officially entered into the contract agreement February 7th of 2023. Got our marketing out. Got our everything lined out with IPermetric as the consultant and really launched this program April of last year. So like I say, we're about 14 months into the program. Next slide. Let you read through that. I think we can all agree this is a strong vision for housing stability, affordability, accessibility within our county. The the basis of our proposal was to expand on our 30-year-old program, which is our homeowner repair and rehab program. And I'll get into it another slide, but a program that Interfaith has found a way, you know, to operate over three decades with very minimal funding. So our our proposal was, hey, give us some real money and see what we can do with this. See how far we can stretch it out into the county and what sort of major impact we can have on our local housing stock. The funding has provided us numerous opportunities over the last year to form new partnerships, new collaborations, to engage in new conversation about, you know, what does progress look like on this this housing issue that we've now been dealing with for so many years? How do we all build strength in our experiences and our shared vision and really move the needle on the housing challenges in this county? Next slide. None of the impact that I'm about to share with you would have been possible without, you know, solution-minded leaders. You know, I attribute that to both the previous commission as well as the current commission in really being open to listening to the challenges, to listening to our ideas, to being experimental in investing in solutions. They're not all going to work. We've definitely, like I said, learned some lessons over the last year. But I think as an organization, as a community, we continue to grow stronger. And I know that we'll see these results both now and into the future, all made possible through a very appropriate level of funding to address a very large-scale issue. Next slide. Take a minute to look at this graph. It's pretty simple, but it's very telling. So over a four-year sampling of Interfaith Housing's homeowner repair and rehab program, we averaged about 50 projects a year. Those were very much targeted to seniors and disabled. Those were urgent health and safety and mobility improvements. That really was our priority, continues to be. But very marginal funding. So much Thanksgiving to the United Way of Reno County, into Reno County Department of Aging, into the Hutchinson Community Foundation, allowing Interfaith to remain solvent and relevant and continue with the program that really just doesn't have a lot of financial support. Occasionally, we would pursue state-level grants. But really, the funding we had over the last 30 years would cover the cost of materials for a ramp build or for an ADA bathroom upgrade. And then we were out soliciting skilled volunteers and local groups to perform the work. I honestly, looking back, don't know how we continue to operate that program. I'm sure we operated it in the red year after year. And then you can see the new results now over the last year or so with your ARPA investment. We've averaged about $11,000 per project, some less, some more. We've addressed major issues on our housing stock, electrical upgrades, roofs, siding, windows. You know, things that really stabilize the value and desirability of that home. Additionally, we've, well, you can see the numbers, 217 projects now over a 14-month period with that level of investment. Bill here next to me is going to speak more about this, but along with our average ARPA investment per project, we've also averaged about $6,000 in leverage funding for each and every project. Next slide. So a little more detail about our homeowner repair and rehab program within our subrecipient contract that we entered into. You would see it Exhibit 2. We've recognized a $25,000 per project goal. That's we've obviously beat that number. We've, we're, at the end of this, we're going to exceed our project goals in terms of count. We're gonna certainly stretch this dollar as far as we can. As far as the, the level of interest, one of the challenges that we have encountered is the challenge of really building trust and engagement with these smaller rural communities. Hutchinson, by virtue of housing count and population, has been by far the largest consumer of this fund. I mean, we could have spent the entire 4 million right here in Hutch. We have continued to engage with the rural communities. In fact, just within the last few months, we have a couple bid tours that have picked up a number of projects in Bueller and in Nickerson. I believe we've even got a pretty major project underway in Turon. So that, that lesson learned is it's going to take a little more work. It may actually extend us beyond this ARPA program as we continue to build a rapport and momentum with these small communities. But I will say, they, they're aware of us now. There's plenty of brush-up signage and other signage that I would hope would be recognizable for those residents in the small communities. And Interfaith is committed to continuing to help them identify their goals, their needs. Just, it's been a challenge and I wanted to share that with you. But Hutchinson by far has really bought into this program. We got a slide there. I'm going to talk a little bit more about demolition, but I think a couple of these slides. Our properties that we were able to acquire or assist the property owner in, and we had determined these properties were just too far gone to invest the money in making those livable again. And so through the ARPA program, we were able to cover the cost of demolition and really remove blight on a block or in a neighborhood. Next slide, please. Acquisition Rehab. So Interfaith has now acquired three houses that we are determined to completely rehab and then make available to a local home buyer. These will remain on the tax roll. In fact, we estimate that at resale, these properties will have increased in assessment value by over 40%. One photo there, 310 West 17th. That one is scheduled to go on the market this week. Little backstory on that. That property ended up at tax sale about two years ago. Prior to that, it had set vacant. Nice little area, 300 Block of West 17th. Set vacant for about four or five years. I'm sure there's a story to how that even happened, but when we acquired it, it was still full of furniture. Basement was unfinished. There were some structural repairs, mechanical repairs, and then a full upgrade to the interior, brand-new roof. I mean, I could go down the list, but really kind of bringing new life to that property and taking it from what realistically was a $90,000 value to twice that value. I would say somewhere in the, in the 160 range, give or take. And of course, value is all in the in the eye of the purchaser, but a great little house, finish the basement out. Opportunity for the home buyer to do a little more work in the basement and increase their equity. So absolutely strategic for the community and for the county to identify these vacant houses and have the resources in the, I want to say agencies that are willing to take on this work. It's not easy work. We're really having to, you know, manage our numbers doing rehab and licensed trades. It's, it's certainly an expensive undertaking at this point, but very proud of those, those first two houses. And then the third one, similar story. It's on West 25th, and that house had been vacant for a number of years. A great little two-bedroom basement, a lot of opportunity there to really increase the desirability and the value of that house and get a family in there that's going to appreciate it for what it is. Next slide, Julia. Got a little statement from one of our clients. If you'd like to read through that. Ms. Hamby, a little bit of her story. I think she was one of the first ARPA participants about a year ago. Single mother, good job, you know, hard-working mother. Years ago, entered into a owner-finance agreement and it's a legitimate. She's, she's on the deed. She has an equitable deed. It's co-owned. I believe getting close to purchasing that property outright after a number of years. But called on us to investigate an electrical issue. Electrical issue turned into this section of the house where it had been shorting on, I believe, the metal siding and had actually started burning through the sheathing on the house and was a real safety concern. But we were able to address that. We were able to upgrade the electrical. I believe that house got a number of other upgrades and you know, this is a client that never would have had access to a program or to assistance. There just wasn't money available to address what I want to call middle-income residents. Affordability is not just poverty and low income. Our middle class need resources and services and programs as well. They're the ones living in most of our mid-range housing, spending all their money on survival and necessities and never extra to do the work on their, on their home. And so this program did allow us that kind of range of opportunity to help the middle class. And we desire to continue to do that work throughout our community. Next slide. Brush Up. So when there's some money and we know there's some reliable money, we get to think creatively. Brush Up Hutchinson is a program that's been around for a number of years. Had a couple seasons where I believe it was due to maybe Interfaith involvement with AmeriCorps and having this, you know, this large-scale volunteer force that year that we did, you know, a couple dozen projects that summer. But barring that season, it's traditionally been 10 or less. I want to say maybe an average of five participants that in Hutchinson that utilized that reimbursement is the way that it was set up. Jeff Thompson, our GC, was instrumental in kind of rethinking. Jeff Thompson, our, our GC, was instrumental in kind of rethinking this, this program and, and what are the requirements? I think the reimbursement piece is one of them, the limits on what we would cover. Were, were another holdback to participation. And relaunched this program early last year and, and it's a $1,500. I think Randy's in that picture, Randy Partington. Is that you? Where, hey, where's your harness at, Randy? So I, you know, we, we bumped it up to 1,500. We eliminated the reimbursement piece. We, we, we got a lot of new door hangers and marketing out. And in that first season last year, 95 vouchers issued, 100, almost $114,000. This is us just, you know, helping kind of guide them into the process of improving their own property. We're covering the paint, we're covering some of the supplies and then they're, they're out there doing the work themselves. Talk about community pride, talk about homeowner pride. It only took $1,500 to get them to that level. Amazing program. You know, this year, we, I believe we're tracking about 50 already vouchers issued and I don't see this program losing momentum. I think there's a lot of appetite for something like this. But again, nothing that would have been possible without the investment from, from, from the county here. Next slide. The Nysleys. Believe we just had an article go out in the last couple of days that highlighted the Nysleys here, but very appreciative to be, to participate in the program. Again, we've got, you know, likely a retired couple, hard-working couple that have a great little house, but not a, not a lot of extra disposable income to, to purchase $1,000 worth of paint. And they, they absolutely improved their house. I think the photo that we were seeing of the kind of light gray house that ended up navy blue, that was their house. But yeah, great statement, great participation. I'm sure they're the type of residents that will tell their friends and, and continue to expand on, on this type of work. Looking at the numbers. So $4 million was the allocation of county money for the Reno County Housing Impact Plan. Our goal within the contract Exhibit 1, it, it identified June 30th of this year or in that time range for the county commission to do a formal performance review. That's what we're here doing today. Interfaith, as we targeted that date of spend-down, we, we set out to spend half of the fund, to have half of the fund allocated to projects by this date. As of June 13th, we're at $2.8 million. Those are funds that have been expended or allocated. By allocated, I mean, we've been out, we've done a bid tour, we've got a signed contract with local contractors to do the work and then they're getting to it as they can. Had no idea that our local contractor force was so backed up. Four to six months, the good ones, right? I'm sure there's some people out there that would do it this Saturday, but the ones that, the ones that you want to use, you know, they're in high demand and we've built a great relationship with them. And Bill's going to talk a little bit about the, the economic impact of this program for our local contractor workforce. Like to turn it over to Bill Lampy. Bill is the executive director of South Central Kansas Economic Development District. You all may know him. Great organization. Through this ARPA program, Interfaith has formed a new and very strong partnership with SCAD. They're a wealth of knowledge, wealth of experience, and an organization that does work throughout the state of Kansas. Their services are in very high demand and I'm appreciative that they have so much resources and energy focused on Reno County right now.
Good morning, commissioners. Today, I'd really just like to talk to you a little bit about our initial goals with, with the housing programs with the county commission, a little bit about his story and how that's affected his company. We hear these stories daily. The, the pipeline for work when we began were weeks and as Clint said, we're now months in pipeline with these local contractors. They're purchasing their products at local vendors. The, the impact is great. The other part we don't really see is how it affects property values unless they're on one of these acquisition or resurgence-type programs. So these homes that were getting facelifts, if you will, and getting new siding.